Call this meeting to order. Today is August the 8th. It's a regular business meeting and if you would please stand and join us, Ms. Simczek will lead us in the ...
Pledge allegiance.
Thank you. Will you join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Simczek.
Thank you.
Okay. First order of business would be the adoption of the orders of the day. Would anyone like anything changed, moved?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see permission to further amend the personnel agenda. We typically receive amendments on Friday with more hires, but I have some additional personnel that we'd like to hire tonight with permission of the board. I'd like to further amend the personnel agenda.
Teachers?
Yes, sir. So we have amended, another amended personnel agenda.
amended, 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 okay.
Yes, sir.
Without exception, that's going to be taken care of. Go ahead. Anybody object to that? Short one. Okay. One more. All right. I need a motion to approve the orders of the day tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There, okay.
With the amendment.
Sure. That's amended. Any discussion? Presentations? Do we have to have presentations first?
Yes, sir.
Well, we're going to have ...
We have to adopt.
Oh, we have a vote, yeah.
Call for a vote, please.
Now, Sean, you normally keep me in really good shape, but tonight we've got to have a vote on this thing.
I'll let you down.
All right. You ready to vote?
Need a backup for your backup?
Any, no discussion. No discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five to zero. Thanks, Sean. Now, presentation? Okay, presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to thank the board for allowing us to amend the consent agenda personnel. Those are all classroom teacher positions and that will enable us to have those teachers in the classroom on the first day of school. So they'll start instruction with their students on day one. So thank you for doing that.
Our normal policy is that everybody is cleared before they come to this board.
Correct.
What could we do to make that easier for you?
You may have noticed that on some of the recommendations it says pending clearance.
Pending clearance.
So you've approved us to hire them and put them in the classroom pending clearance of the background check and drug screening. So that does, that's a step that we haven't been utilizing in the past that will make it easier for us to do that. Appreciate the board allowing us to do that. But still, we can't really hire people without board approval, so this still has to come to you for final approval every time.
They just can't start to work.
Correct, sir.
Correct?
Yep.
So, and there's no policy about that. It's just the way we've always done it in the past.
It's my understanding that it's, there's nothing written in policy that we can't do, recommended for higher pending clearance, which we've done on several of these times.
Does anybody have any objection to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I have a question. I mean, but they, before they go into a classroom, they have been background checked and drug checked.
You betcha.
Is that the question? All right.
Absolutely. They still will have to jump through all the hoops and pass all the background clearances and everything before they actually set foot in the classroom and before we pay them a dime.
But sometimes they may be, they may be ready to go. The board meeting is tonight and they, their clearance may come in tomorrow and school doesn't start until Monday. So I just think it's, it's good to give the superintendent a little bit more room to hang himself in case, you know, but I just think it's a good policy and I think we're all, yes, ma'am?
Thank you. And I don't have a problem, but in general, even though it's consent, it's still an action. And I know that we are either coming from somewhere or in a meeting that even though we might get at the dais and look at the couple of highlights, I would still urge, I hope that this is put up on, as an amendment on the website so that there is public transparency.
Dr. Rendell?
Even though we might get it now, I would hope that somebody could rush to put it on the website as well as if there's going to be an amendment like, you know, this may never happen again now that I mention it.
Correct.
But post at the door. I really just want public transparency.
Yeah, typically we'll stick to the Friday afternoon pattern that we've been following, but since we have school starting next Monday and we don't meet again for two more weeks, we had just a handful of these people that we wanted to add, so that's why we did that. This will, of course, be memorialized in the minutes and everything else. Mr. Green, anything to add?
Yes, I've already given it to Ms. Esplin and we're going to put it on the agenda as a regular amendment like we normally would on a Friday, so there'll be an amendment. This with the yellow highlight, it'll be on the agenda then because this will be the amendment?
I guess that I'm not making my point clear. There may be somebody from the public who'd want to speak about it, although we look at it and we're fine with it. I feel that everybody, you know, when they're taking before five, five minutes before six o'clock may want to say, "I have to speak on something."
Absolutely. We can have that available.
You know, so I, I, I can see a posting. I don't know what, you do what I'm saying? Posting after the fact is not giving the public, who may never want to speak about it, but just somehow, whether it's at the door or ...
That's good.
You may not be able to reach us a half hour before, but have it put up on our website real quick as well as post at the door. It's just my feeling about, so that if anybody wanted to take action, that's the best we could do.
Right. The amendments will, will follow the Friday afternoon pattern that we have just tonight since we had a few more that we were able to offer jobs to and accept. And school starts next week, we brought them to the dais tonight.
And like I said, it may not happen until next year, but it does seem to happen, so just keep that in mind.
Mm-hmm. So we do have a short presentation. We've had the summer off so to speak, but not all of us have had the summer off. There have been plenty of personnel that have been busy working, so we wanted to share some of the work that teachers especially have been doing over the summer.
The Digital Summer Academy, in partnership with the Education Foundation, was held at the Freshman Learning Center from July 24th through the 28th. Throughout the week, more than 250 teachers received technology integration training for their classrooms. Dr. Nathan Lang, educational strategist with CDW, was Monday's keynote speaker and kicked off the Digital Summer Academy. Dr. Lang encouraged teachers to think outside the box to create innovative learning experiences for students. Teachers new to the one-to-one program received training on digital classroom basics, Canvas, Office 365, and technology integration with Greg Kulawick of EdTech Teacher. On Wednesday, Lauren Hobbs, educational strategist for Dell, was the keynote speaker and talked to teachers about creating student-centered learning environments in their classrooms.
If we facilitate, who's really driving that process? The teacher, right?
Teachers attending the Digital Summer Academy had the opportunity to attend more than 50 different trainings, including smart software, McGraw-Hill textbooks, Learning.com, PBS Learning Media, and received instruction from the digital integration specialist and veteran one-to-one teachers. We are so excited to bring 21st century learning and innovation skills to the classrooms of Indian River County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's the only presentation for tonight.
Okay, very good. The next item would be citizen input. Right, Sean? And the first speaker will be Coletta Murray.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Rendell. I feel a need to speak for the value of our support staff. I was very hopeful the last board meeting that I attended, listening to the amount of information that was shared about the support staff member's struggles in their families and knowing that they are going into negotiations. I was hoping that there would be something more offered for them. I really thought that the support staff cries would be heard and favorable increases would have been offered in their June negotiations, but rather, all I heard that they were offered was a 2% stipend. That's not a salary increase. That's a one-time, here you go. They need an increase. The employees deserve that kind of cost of living because we hit them with a very high insurance and we all understand about the insurance, but they are lower paid. I pay 100, if I paid $125, a teacher's assistant paid $125 as well for her medical. I make, yes, it ouched, but for them, it's more than an ouch. All they're looking for is a little bit of respect, to be valued and appreciated. I'm a teacher in the district over 15 years. I love my job. I love my school family. I love my district, but more importantly, I love my students. Students are who we are here for. So I felt the need to put into perspective how the support staff support and our students value them. Our secretaries, they are the smiling faces that the students first see when they come in. They represent our school to our families as well as some students that may come in on the unprecise events. They get to see them. They welcome them. They feel safe. Our cafeteria staff, every child gets greeted that comes through the line. They are the ones, for some students, that supply the only two balanced meals that they get every day. Plus, at some schools, which mine is one, they offer a program that's called Backpack Buddies. They go out into the community above and beyond, collect donations, pack donations so that these children that are free and reduced lunch go home with a bag of food for the weekend so that they can eat. They do that all on their own. That's one program I know that's at my school. Then the kids love it. The kids live for it. And even sometimes they get donations for the holidays for these families as well to help them out. Our custodians, they keep our school clean, sanitized, and assist with their lunch cleanups. They also assist with one of the cleanups that we really don't want to be having, that when our children are not feeling well, they are the first ones right there. They're sanitizing the rooms, making sure that it doesn't spread. The physical plant, that's all of our outside people. They help with the function of the school. And I will, I will wrap it up. The bus drivers transport. And our teachers assistants, they go above and beyond. They are with the students that need the most support all the time, as well as when they are beyond, if they have time, they come and help everybody else as well. Everyone at our, they touch every single one of our children, all of these employees, directly or indirectly. I feel we are direct. As a district, we need to give the students the best opportunity to succeed, and I think we do.
Thank you, Ms. Murray.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval as amended? Correct?
Make a motion to approve as amended. Second.
And Ms. Justice. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, the next item should be the action agenda. Item number A, approval of the master in-service plan for 2017-18. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In action item A, in accordance with Florida statutes and Board of Education rules, we are to develop and maintain an in-service education and training program for all employees based on an assessment of training needs in the district and local schools. The proposed master in-service plan includes areas of focus and a list of training and in-service dates. A copy of the entire plan is available in the Curriculum and Instruction Department. There is no cost to the district in approving the plan, so we ask for your approval of the master in-service plan.
Any motion?
Move approval.
I just would like you just to explain a little bit what this is because this is my first time seeing something like this, so I didn't know if Ms. Dampier could explain.
Sure. We can actually, yeah, we can definitely have Mrs. Dampier respond. The in-service plan is basically a list of the different types of training that we're going to be offering to our employees throughout the year, and it's all based on a needs assessment that's done the year prior. So, Mrs. Dampier, any details, Mr. Chair?
Good evening. Again, as Dr. Rendell said, we have to follow the master in-service plan with the state stating that we have met all the criterias regarding different parts of our master in-service plan regarding so many hours. How do we provide training for our teachers? If you look in the plan, it outlines the different parts and components of the plan. We attach our plan for this coming school year, which is the PD plan for 2017. Our areas of focus are right in line with our strategic plan, culture and climate, standard-based instruction, and formative assessments. So all of the training that we provide, be it district-based or school-based, will be focused on those three areas.
Is that training done here, is it done here at the district or is it, do the principals do the training? Who does that?
If it's school-based, and we have several days that are school-based, the principals would do the training. If it's district-based, we will do the training or principals will come here for training if it's district-based and we're providing the training here. But it just depends on what the needs are at the schools. We actually did a survey at the end of the school year and based on the survey, that's how we came up with the focus areas, which happened to be right in line with our strategic plan about the services and what they would like to see for this coming school year.
Okay.
So if we, we have teacher learning days, we added two learning days, 921 and 228. Those are days that the teachers can provide independent learning opportunities for teachers to sit webinar, they can participate in a PLC, they can take a class online. Those are their dates, their choice dates that they can choose to do some type of professional development. And then, of course, we have the teacher and then we have the district, which are aligned with. We'll be looking at data and we'll be focused on these three areas.
Yeah, I, I do like this because being out, speaking with teachers, that's something that would come up quite often was just having more training, so I appreciate this and you going out and doing the survey and everything to really know what they want versus what we think they need or want, so I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
I just think this is a good example of, you know, truly the strategic plan not being on a shelf, being at work in our classrooms and across our district. And, you know, I've seen examples already of the strategic plan through different trainings and I think, you know, what we're hearing, if teachers were asking for that culture and climate, standard-based instruction, informative assessment, help and trainings throughout the year, their voices were really heard in our strategic plan. So I think it's just important to remember what a collaboration that was. It's very exciting to see it at work.
I have a couple of points on it. I noticed the, one of the first, I guess it's the third sentence in there, it says that this, this applies to all employees and everything that I've heard tonight relates just to teachers. Do we provide any kind of in-service training for the folks that aren't teachers?
Different departments do provide training, like bus drivers, cafeteria. As a matter of fact, VPK is actually getting training tomorrow through Brooke, so we are meeting the needs of our employees.
What about safety? Do we have any, like, safety classes or, I mean, all I see in here is teachers. And that's good, but I'm wondering about the other folks because it says that we, we provide this to all district employees.
And different department has, for example, safety, that would be Mr. Teskey, so he does provide, you want to speak on that on behalf of what he ...
So Mr. Caldwell, for example, provides ongoing training throughout the year to maintenance personnel. There are plenty of trainings that are offered to different, other classified workers. You may recall in the Friday updates in the past, we used to show examples of those training sessions. We've, we've not provided that in the Friday updates for a while, but they do still happen, but we could provide those for you. But every segment of, of the, of the district employee groups are provided training throughout the year.
And they get points the same way as the teachers get points?
In some cases, they get points. In other ways, it can work towards a certification and that kind of thing.
The other question I had is this new teacher mentor program. Apparently, we've got a lot of new teachers this year and are there going to be enough mentors around to handle all the teachers that we, and are they already assigned? That's ...
The principals are responsible for assigning mentors. However, we refined our program this year where we were providing a cycle of support where the administrators are facilitating the training and support at the schools along with the PDC rep and our mentors. So there's going to be three layers of support for the new teachers in our school, at our school campuses.
So the promise that I'm hearing is we're not just going to hire them, put them in the classroom and leave them alone?
No, sir. We actually had training for administrators the first week of August and the administrators, we refined our process so the administrators are in charge of the trainings as well as the mentors and the PDC reps will provide that support. And we're going to provide opportunities for them to go into classrooms and observe, the mentor go and observe, the mentee as well as vice versa, and give that support as well as the PDC reps will open up their classrooms and have model classrooms to go so they can see PD to practice. So we're, we're just creating opportunities for our teachers to be successful. And as you may recall, last week, we had our new teacher orientation, which was very successful, a lot of positive feedback. So we think we're on the right track with our teachers and we're going to provide them that, like I said, cycle of support to ensure that they are successful along the way. And every quarter, we will be trying to actually have some type of, you know, network, social to make sure that they find that connection in our community as well because, you know, it's, it's nothing like being able to talk to another new teacher at another location to, you know, build those relationships. So our goal is to make sure that we retain our teachers this year.
Is this, is this this year or we had this in years past? I don't recall.
Actually, we refined the program where we have a manual and I'd be more than happy to share that with you.
A manual, hmm.
The star manual, which outlines the responsibilities of everyone as far as the administrators, the mentors, and the PDC reps. It outlines all of the trainings, the modules, what's expected of each one, also how they gain in-service hours, but I'd be more than happy to share that with you.
I'm sure Ms. Zork would like to have that to study for us.
I'll send it to you electronically.
Thank you very much.
And the union was very involved in that as well. We had Ms. Cannon look at it and give feedback along the way, so she vetted it and we were, we're very happy to say that we feel like we're going to support our teachers for this coming school year.
One of the criticisms that I've heard out in the community is that, is that we get a new teacher and we just leave them alone. And I hope that's days gone by.
No, sir.
I really do.
No, sir.
Because we need them all, so.
No, sir. There are specific roles outlined and in the manual as well as the principal supervisors will be making sure that we're successful in that area because our goal is to maintain, you know, retention rate for teachers.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, that's action A. Action B, approval of spending plan and budget amendment. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, action item B, C, and D are all related. They are all part of the expansion and relocation and expansion of the Technical Center for Career and Adult Education. Item B is a budget amendment. Item C is actually an amendment to the Fager Capital Plan, and then item D is approval of an architectural contract. In amendment B, the board may recall that, excuse me, in action item B, the board may recall that at a workshop on July 25th, staff presented a complete plan on how to fund a relocation and expansion of the Technical Center for Career and Adult Education. As part of the funding plan, the recommendation is to transfer approximately $1.51 million from the Workforce Education Fund to the capital budget. We ask for your approval of that budget amendment to transfer those funds to this project.
I need a motion for action B.
Move approval.
Second.
Sean, okay. Any discussion?
Very excited to be able to utilize these funds for this project. It's going to be great for the community.
Is the, will this be using up all of those funds that we had that Tallahassee's been telling us that we shouldn't be?
Not quite. No, sir. We had to leave some funds in there to make sure we can continue to operate the Technical Center for Career and Adult Education programs, you know, as we go forward. It's a generate, it's a fund generating program, but still, we wanted to leave a little bit of money there to make sure that they have some operating funds.
But we won't get criticized by Tallahassee for holding that money over?
No, sir. In fact, we've already talked with some of the people in, at the state and they're very excited about this.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five to zero. Item C, I believe you said it's about the same thing. I need a motion. Oh, let's, go ahead and tell us about C then, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In action item C, also as part of the presentation at the workshop on the 25th, there was a request to transfer some available funds from other projects in the capital outlay plan to fund the relocation project for the Technical Center for Career and Adult Education. The amount of these funds totaled $636,545. We do not believe that this will impact our ability to provide the other projects that are listed in the capital plan, so we seek your approval to move those funds into this project.
Need a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item D, Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In action item D, we are seeking approval for a task assignment for Architectural Services with Denadio and Associates for the Phase One development of the Gifford Technical Center for Career and Adult Education. We're not sure if that's going to be the final name of the site.
Okay.
But the project will consist of the addition of a new vocational classroom slash lab building, renovations to the existing classrooms, and relocation of the hardcourt structure for the conversion of the existing Gifford Alternative School Campus to a career and adult education technical facility. The contract fee totals a not-to-exceed amount of $172,955. The contract fee includes architectural, civil, structural, mechanical, electrical plumbing, and fire protection services as outlined in the proposal, so we seek your approval of the agreement.
Need a motion?
Move approval.
Sean, need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This only, this is the, the architectural and engineering in all feet for Phase One and there's no commitment at all to Phase Two?
Absolutely not.
Okay. And there's, there's, you and I talked about another little issue the other night, trying to keep all of them, all of the both programs at Gifford. That's not on the table anymore.
We haven't made, we can still do this without, we haven't made a decision on that one way or the other. We can still move forward with this part of the project without.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five to zero. Okay. Okay, then we need to go to action item E, approval of recurring vendors. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In action item E, the purchasing department is requesting that the board grant authority to the superintendent to issue purchase orders in amounts that may exceed the board policy of 50, of the $50,000 threshold that are necessary in the normal course of operations during fiscal year 2018. The vendors on the attached list are companies and/or firms that the district will procure commodities and/or contractual services from during the year that are either formal bid exempt or are in accordance with properly awarded public bid or term on contract. These purchases will be recurring in nature for fiscal year 2018. All other non-recurring purchases that exceed $50,000 will be presented to the board on an individual basis. Staff will present quarterly reports of the purchase orders issued in accordance with this agenda item. So this is that recurring list of, of services and purchases that we ask for your approval of.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. I'll second it. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five to zero. Thank you very much.
No.
Four to zero?
Four to one. Got to speak up, Laura.
Okay, well, I just, I've never, I never liked the $50,000 policy that we have. I looked on the list, we have Regions Bank and ENG. There's just several vendors on here that I would like to have more authority as a board to have oversight of, and so I'm, I don't feel comfortable as a board member to approve that on, on this list.
What one were you looking at there, though?
I'm looking at Regions Bank, which is our credit card.
Okay, okay.
And I'm not comfortable with giving the authority on that one or the ENG Environmental Services. And then a couple of them I'm not that familiar with, but I don't remember ever getting quarterly reports on this. Do we?
I think Carter wanted to address that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Morrison?
No, I was just mentioning that this, the quarterly reports are put on the board agenda and publicly displayed, the information item, on a quarterly basis.
So it's at the back of the board book on certain business meetings. We can draw your attention to the next one.
Well, I do know, I do know I get line items with totals, but it's not quarter, it's not more of a detailed report, right?
I believe it gives you the purchase order number and the items that were purchased, if I remember the report correctly.
Okay.
It may be off, but.
Okay. Is that the one that's, the print's really tiny on it?
It gives you the, it gives you the authority that was requested and the amount that has been issued against that authority.
Okay. So I'm, my vote's no.
Okay, fine. Any other discussion? I would like to call the question again. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Four to one. Ms. Zork is no. I'm sorry, Laura, I moved along too fast on that.
That's fine.
Okay. Now we go to action item F, approval of the release of the final payment to Close Construction LLC for the Wabasu School ADA Drainage Improvement Project. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And action item F, we're seeking approval for release of the final payment in the amount of $6,377.68 to Close Construction LLC for the Wabasu School ADA and Drainage Improvement Project. Final payment for this project is being brought to the board for approval in accordance with Florida statute 1013 dot 50. Final payment to the contract consists of the project retainage, which is held until project completion. Interesting to note, even after the final payment of the seven, $6,377.68, we still have a balance of $12,234.46 that we will be retaining to be able to apply to other projects.
Need a motion?
Move approval.
Sean, need a second. Zork.
Glad we could wrap it up in the center.
Going awfully fast here.
Great.
Okay.
Great job.
My question is, that mystery $12,000, where do we put that? I mean, we just.
I bet we have a use.
Mr. Morrison, you want to tackle that?
We typically apply that to projects on the unfunded list that we can try to get, knock them off as we go forward.
Remember, it's capital funds, so we'll have to go to a capital project, so maybe some more cover awnings at the location, stuff like that.
Okay. Don't go by in the general fund.
No, sir. Can go to general.
Capital.
Well, just checking, just checking.
Computer.
Okay. Any other discussion? Laura, surely you have something on this. Okay, okay. You had your chance, okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five, zero. Okay. Golly, it's only 6:32. Okay. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I have three things I want to discuss tonight. The first, I want to give some kudos to Mr. Morrison and his supervision and leadership with now benefits being under his control. Open enrollment is something that used to be a four-letter word around here, and I'm going to give him the floor to talk a little bit about open enrollment. One thing I want to draw your attention to, I'm not sure if the board is aware, I'm sure that the viewing audience isn't aware, this was our employee benefits package guide before in the past. It's about four pages, maybe six. This is our employee and benefits guide for this year. Much more comprehensive, much more user-friendly. This alone is an improvement, but I'd like to give Mr. Morrison the opportunity to outline some of the other changes because we do have open enrollment coming up and we want to make sure that everybody understands that we're doing this in such a way it's going to be so user-friendly and we shouldn't run into any of the issues we have in the past. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you very much, Dr. Rendell. As you mentioned, we're getting geared up for the 2017-18 employee benefits year. The new benefits guide, as Dr. Rendell displayed, for open enrollment have been delivered to all work sites, along with the election forms and a memorandum with my signature on it regarding the meeting dates. We have also sent out an email to all employees, including the meeting dates, and next week, another notification will be added to the DocuLibre website, so all employees, when they log in for their pay stub information, that information will be clearly displayed on that information, on that pay stub. We will also have our vendors and benefit department representatives on hand to answer any questions during the open enrollment and to assist employees on the following dates. On August the 16th, on August 16th, from 7:00 a.m. in the morning to 7:00 p.m. at night, we will be in this very room in the Teacher Education Center in this building. On August 17th, the very next day, from 10:00 a.m. in the morning till 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon, we'll be at the Employee Wellness Center Building at 5245 Forty First Street. On the final day, August 18th, from 8:00 a.m. in the morning till 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon, we'll be back in this room in the Teacher Education Center Building. We wish to express our deepest thanks to Mr. Carver, our Director of Purchasing, Kim Barrett, our Print Shop Manager, and her wonderful staff for getting the guides completed in an efficient and expedient manner. In other words, these were done internally. They were all a pleasure to work with and the guides could not look any better, as Dr. Rendell pointed out. We'd also like to thank the warehouse staff for getting these guides delivered. We printed about 2,100 of these guides, delivered to the sites so quickly. We also had incredible help from the District Administrative Assistants, who made sure the guides were distributed to all employees and they have to sign for them, and we wish to thank them as well. As you can see, this is a huge project and we could not have pulled it off without their help. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you.
Just note, it's been a total team effort to make sure that our employees have this information as early as possible so they're prepared for open enrollment by not changing plans and providers. Basically, if you want to keep everything the way you have it right now, you don't have to do anything. If you want to make some changes there, we will meet with you face to face to help you do those changes. It's not an online process like it was in the past. And as Mr. Morrison outlined, there are plenty of different opportunities for our employees to get that help, you know, several different days, several different hours, several different locations. I just think that the open enrollment process is going to go so much more smoothly, and I definitely thank Mr. Morrison and the team in benefits, but then also, I guess, the print shop and all the secretaries at the school buildings for making sure everything got out to all the employees. Just wanted to share that information with you. Second thing I want to do is give a shout out to our new Public Information Officer, Kristin McMillan. She got a call today from Channel 5 and they wanted to do a story, an educational story. They didn't really have any ideas, and she said, "Well, we need to do a story. We need to highlight two of our schools that had incredible turnarounds last year." So at the five, on the five o'clock news today, if you missed it, maybe you can catch it tonight at the 11:00, or maybe it's on online, but Channel 5 did a story on Dodger Town Elementary and Vero Beach Elementary. It was a great story. You know, the story is, needs to be told of the turnaround that happened at those two schools, but without Kristin taking the call and arranging for the reporters to meet with staff at those schools, we wouldn't have the story. So it was great. Good job of her today. So we thank her for getting that positive word out. Again, that's part of the strategic plan, making sure that we take every, advantage of every opportunity to tell the good stories about the things going on. Next, we'd like to show you a quick video clip about an event that is coming up very soon, not just to our district, but to the entire North American continent.
On August 21st, 2017, a solar eclipse will pass over all 50 United States. This will afford most of the country a glimpse of what it is like to have the moon slide between the sun and the earth, casting a shadow on us down below. The experience will look different depending on where you are located. If you are along the path of totality, you see the moon fully block the sun. If you are outside of the path, you will see the moon go by, but the sun will never be fully covered. Wherever you are, you never want to look directly at the sun without protection, like eclipse glasses, not sunglasses. The one exception is if you are able to see totality. Only when the moon has fully blocked the sun, you are safe to look at the eclipse directly. Before and after that moment, keep your eyes protected. Events like this are rare. The last total solar eclipse to cross the U.S. coast to coast was in 1918, and the next total solar eclipse in the continental U.S. isn't until 2024. Don't miss this opportunity to experience a solar eclipse.
So board members and members of the viewing audience, in case you weren't aware, the second Monday of the school year for us is the day that the solar eclipse will happen. And, you know, our viewing area, we are not in the total eclipse path or the viewing area, but we still will be able to view or experience the eclipse. This event does occur during the school day, really towards the end of the day at dismissal time, depending on what grade level your son or daughter is in. We are looking at this as a huge teachable moment. Like the video clip said, this is something that's rare. As teachers, we're always looking for those teachable moments, and this is definitely one of those. So we want to do everything we can to educate the students about this phenomenon, about what's happening. But we also need to make sure that we safeguard our students. They mentioned in the video clip that it's dangerous to look directly at the sun during an eclipse. It's actually dangerous to look directly at the sun anytime. But because of an eclipse and the event that is happening, that typically draws curiosity. People decide to want to look at it to see if they can see it and that kind of thing. So while we are going to take full advantage and treat this as a teachable opportunity, we want to make sure that our students are safe. So at no time are we going to take the students outside for a viewing activity during the eclipse. We're going to make sure that they stay inside during the time that the phenomenon is occurring, just so they're not tempted to look up and maybe damage their eyesight. So while we have them in the classrooms, we're going to do lessons about it leading up to the day of, and on the day of, we'll do some things like stream a live broadcast from NASA about the eclipse and that kind of thing. So we're going to make sure that our students know everything they can about it and they experience it to the extent that they can inside and safely, but we'll take all the precautions we can to make sure students are safe. Now, if parents want to take their son or daughter out of school so that they can view the eclipse in a safe manner on their own, that can be an excused absence. It's an educational opportunity, so if the parents decide they want to check their kids out early and buy the glasses or go to a planetarium or go somewhere that has a safe telescope or something like that, or go, I've had some families contact me and say they're going to go up to North Georgia because that's one of the areas that has a better view, and they're going to take all the precautions and that kind of thing. If they want to do that, that's an excused absence. But, you know, we're going to take every precaution we can to make sure that our students are safe during this event. We will be in school, in session, and for example, during the time that this is happening, we'll be probably on a code yellow, which means we limit outside movement of students and that kind of thing, so we won't have anybody outside during the activity to make sure that they don't have the opportunity to look up. But I wanted to share that with the board and make sure they're aware if they had any questions.
We're not to look at the sun during, is that what you're saying?
Well, unless you have the approved glasses.
Glasses.
And there are some that you can order that aren't approved, so make sure they have the, there's a seal that.
They're not like 3D glasses that you go to the movies and.
No, sir.
Look like them, but, okay.
But in all seriousness, it is a real, it's a rare event.
It's a big deal.
And if people want to take advantage of, and take the necessary precautions, buy the glasses or, you know, figure out a different way to view it safely and you can get online and learn all you need to know about it, it can be an excused absence. But we aren't going to organize, you know, watch sessions or anything like that.
What time did you say the eclipse, the timeframe that's going to?
So the latest inform, and I'm not a scientist or an astronomist, but the latest information I've been able to find on the web says on that day, about 1:50 p.m. to about 4:15 p.m. is our viewing window. The peak would be at 2:55 p.m. That's what I've heard is right just before 3:00. That's when the most blockage of the sun that we would be able to experience will occur. Not a full eclipse, we're not in that path.
And that's probably the time when we let the most of our elementary students.
Correct. So about 3:30 is dismissal, so it's after the peak, but the event would still be happening. So one of the things we're considering is delaying dismissal for the elementary schools so that they would, you know, we wouldn't be putting them out there at the time where it'd be most dangerous, so. But we haven't made a decision on that yet.
Mr. Shersky?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to take a second to applaud the curriculum department and district staff to really take this opportunity to educate our students about this. I know there are a lot of districts that are closing their schools for the day, and while that is an option, I know there are some schools in New River County that are doing that. I think we'd be missing an opportunity to really help our students to experience something amazing. So I'm really excited that our students will be able to watch the live stream and learn more about it. I know online, there are lots of resources that are tied to the Florida State standards in lots of different areas of learning that teachers can utilize, so I just think it's great that we are taking the time to recognize it.
Okay. Well, I had one question about that booklet we have for health benefits.
Yes, sir.
And all that good stuff. Now, do we have, and I think I asked one of the other assistant superintendents, do we have a personnel manual that we hand to every, every employee?
We do not at current have a personnel manual. We have the employee benefits guide, teacher contract, CWA contract, copies of that kind of thing. There's no employee handbook.
Will there be in the future?
There's always that possibility.
I just think that it would be really good to have that, as I expressed to another individual the other day, when he was working on Saturday, by the way. Okay. Yes, sir. This is a discussion, so go ahead.
Okay, great. I just have one question about open enrollment. In the past, there's been a situation where an employee would have their benefits dropped, and there wasn't an affirmative acknowledgement by the employee that they were not opting into anything, and therefore their benefits were terminated. And then it's no secret, there was a reversal of those things and it created quite a stir. I just wonder if we've moved to a place of positive acknowledgement of denial of benefits by the employee.
So this time around, as Dr. Rendell mentioned, it's paper-based. We're actually going to have a photocopier in the room, so before you leave, this is your, this is your, what you signed up for, or this is what you decided to terminate, and you'll be leaving with a copy of that. We're also in the process of replacing the prior year's software. We actually have some demos coming up to look at that. That will give us that opportunity for a positive confirmation, I do not want this type of benefit, based on what happened last time around. So that's in process.
Outstanding. Thank you for addressing that. So if someone doesn't come to one of these open enrollment sessions, would then their site-based administrators seek them out to get that affirmation?
Excellent, excellent question. We actually have obtained from the schools and also from HR, a list of people who are currently on leave for our workman's comp or things of that nature, and we're making arrangements to have those, these benefits guides mailed to their house, to their home address and with a confirmation that they received it.
Okay, good.
Anything else under discussion, Sean?
Yes, sir.
Assistant check?
It could be discussion or members, well, I'll do it under discussion. My mother used to say, "Every pot has a lid." And I look out and I see principals have risen to administration in the audience, and I have seen in the past that some of our administrators have missed the classroom and gone back, that once they're having a career with an agency, whether it's the police agency or the school district, that people do move from place to place and share their talents. Principal, whose, we had two principals this year, whose contract was not renewed as a principal position, but both principals were given positions. In fact, tonight's change, that one principal went from a resource specialist to a classroom teacher. However, only one. Last meeting, I had said that there was a campaign smear in the media against this one principal, and I was not only quoted, but the headline said, "Fired Principal Is Rehired." And I don't know about anybody here, but we all are responsible for terminations in our district. And, as I look at people who are currently working for us, I know they would want me to defend them as well, that that is something terrible to have out there in media, as you were fired. This person was not fired. And, it only proved my point, that there was a personal agenda against that one principal and not the other, in that particular publication. So, I feel it necessary that I just say that to the people who are watching. It's not going to have that same spread. I doubt that publication will do a retraction on poor Mrs. Decker, but she was not fired, and I want to publicly say that she was not fired. She's a talented, well-deserving woman of our district, and as people I see have changed careers and paths, either unilaterally, or better to serve, or just for the love of being back in a classroom for an administration. We've had principals move over to transportation. That is either personal reasons or decisions of our head administrator, Dr. Rendell, who I respect his decision of, as I said, putting every pot... You know, every pot with... You know, there's a pot for every... A lid for every pot. And, I do feel that those decisions are made by Dr. Rendell, and I support him totally, as I did tonight. But, again, it was just sad to see the smearing and slander of... Again, when I said, you know, I said it the first time, but now it was proven within the last two weeks. So, I just wanted to mention that, that it was just as sad to see in the paper.
Anything else in discussion?
Well, unfortunately, because it was on the agenda and we are under sunshine, I tried not to say the name, but there wasn't any way around that, and there wasn't any way for us to discuss it unless it was public. So, it wasn't something I wanted to...
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm just saying, there was an article, maybe you didn't see the article, but the article ran, "Fired Gifford Principal Rehired." And, I think that's terrible, because that's not factual. And, so, I just wanted to clear that up. Nothing against... Everybody has a right to poll and ask questions. I'm just saying, a headline like that... That's why I will thank our new PIO for positive press, good job. And, I wish people weren't out to the... You know, if it reads... If it bleeds, it reads. If it thinks, it stinks. And, I really hate publications who follow that train of thought. Thank you.
Any other chip in on that one? Okay. Anything else under discussion? No, Ms. Simchat, you're still on.
That's it. I'll just, you know, and I could... I'll just blank it all together, because that video on Dr. Lang from CDW, I know that's where we get our equipment, and that sound, that was probably such a wonderful workshop, and I really commend all of those who were off this summer who attended. I'm just really proud of all of you that who did go, and great speakers, so that's it.
Ms. Justice?
Are we on to member matters, sir? Are we still in discussion?
We're actually on discussion, but...
Okay, I'm ready. When we move to members matters, I have some things to share.
John, you want to say anything else in discussion?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any other ideas? One of... You're sure?
I'm sure.
Okay. I don't know if you folks got the memo. Dr. Rendell sent me a memo today about our... An issue that's caused a lot of grief in this district, and involves insurance. Did you copy the other board members on that?
Yeah. I have to prepare a cover email to them.
Well, we have a situation where we're probably paying about 60% more for workers' comp insurance than we should. And, I think that superintendent's going to be addressing that, but hopefully, you'll have the emails very shortly. But, that's something that we need to look at. He needs to look at it. Carter and whoever else is responsible over there needs to look at it, because 60% more than what we need to be paying for insurance is a real problem. And, that, number one, is probably the premium. But, I don't know what other benefits that we might be losing by paying... By having an issue like that. So, I hope that we can get it looked at sooner than later, and I wonder what this fine folk... The fine folks that we have at SCRAMP, I think their name... They're being a little scrumpy to us, but I wonder what benefit we actually get from them.
This is more of the relationship with Ascension, correct, Mr. Morrison?
Yes. Ascension is the third-party administrator for the consortium.
Okay. And, we're going to look at getting some help from SCRAMP or Ascension or somebody so that we can get our mod back down?
Yeah. There's quite a bit of information also in the email, as well as attachment, that Dr. Rendell will disseminate to all board members.
With the SCRAMP.
The South Central Educational Risk Management Program.
God bless you.
So, that's a consortium that we belong to with other school districts.
So, go ahead, Sean. You're about to come out.
No. That's...
Okay.
The only information I need right now. Thank you.
Is that something... They're supposed to be helping us, or what is their function?
So, the consortium is a pooling together of all... There are like seven school districts in the consortium. Martin St... Just going to go by memory here. Martin St. Lucy, Indian River, Hardy, Highlands, Glades, and there's one more I'm missing now.
Okeechobee?
Yes. No, no, Okeechobee's not in there. I forgot the last one.
Hendry?
But, they... Hendry, thank you. So, they... We all pooled together. Our book of business is about $4.1 billion, so we do get coverage and insurance policies through Lloyds of London. We go out to open market. The coverage that we get is for property casualty, as well as the workman's comp program. In the email, we describe some of the issues that we've dealt with over time. I wouldn't want to speak to it right now until board members have had the opportunity to review the information, but they do provide services with respect to our workman's comp claims and some of the cases, and some of the management of those cases. So, I'll leave it at that for now, until you've had a chance to...
And, we pay a fee to them to be a part of that?
No, we do not pay a fee to Ascension. As members of the consortium, there is a fund that we established jointly... Oops. Jointly through the consortium that pays them a... Essentially, a brokerage fee, which is very, very low. A very low fee.
Laura?
I'm just feeling really left out of this conversation, because I don't know what you got today. So, I don't know. How often do you get these?
How do I...
How often do you get these type of emails? And, do they always make it over to us, or are they sometimes...
Hey, well, I just hadn't had a chance to write the cover letter email to you all explaining what he requested and how we presented it back.
I like you, Laura. I sent an email to the superintendent, asked some questions. He responded to me, and he's going to respond to you the same way, so that you will be apprised of the situation. But, it's a big deal, and this board certainly needs to address it. Actually, superintendent needs to address it, and then we need to have some input on it. But, since this is discussion, that's what I wanted to... I wanted it on the table tonight.
Well, I appreciate you inquiring on this, because when you do that type of work, it's something we all can work on. But, wasn't the audit committee one of their three items? Was that included in that?
No, I do not believe that. That was an issue that the audit committee wanted to look at, which was the moderate. In the consortium, all moderates are essentially up around the same number. And, again, I would want you to have an opportunity to look at that.
That'd make it right. That'd make it right.
Correct.
If we're paying 60% more than what we should be paying, that's... I don't care what the other guys are doing, but that's something we can control. But, we've got it on the table, and that's... It's up to you guys to try to figure out how to get it down to one. So, any other discussion on that?
Seems like a workshop discussion item.
Well, let's see what the superintendent... Well, look at the email, and then you come back, and if we get it on the workshop... We have the superintendent, he'll put that on workshop. We do need help on that. And then, I... This would be under discussion. We don't have a dress code, a real top drawer dress code, but I just heard this rumor that Fort Pierce Central has a new dress code that requires their students to have button-down collars, belts, no pants hanging down, you know, pretty low. And, you know, Fort Pierce Central. And, I mean, you know, we always look at Fort Pierce maybe as...
Central's coming a long way, though.
Maybe we're a little above them. They're coming a long way, but I'm telling you, but we need to look at something like that. It... Button-down collars are pretty nice. We need to look at... We need to look at sprucing up our policy, because I think first impressions last, and if our dress code allows for less than perfection at the teacher level, administrator level, and on down, I think we need to take a look at that, so...
Mr. Cersei?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we in discussion, sir?
This is discussion, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Great. Let's discuss it a little bit. So, two of our middle schools this year took votes, and they'll be moving to uniforms. Sebastian River Middle School will be the only middle school that doesn't have a uniform on their campus. And, I've heard from some parents that might like to have a uniform there, and I've heard some from parents... Some parents who don't. Again, it was a vote taken at both of the other campuses, Gifford Middle and Ozilla Middle, so they will have uniforms. Not button-down collars, but certainly a dress code.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. And, you know, it's interesting, upon reflection of some of the issues we've had with code of conduct and different things with, you know, different symbols or different colors or things of that nature, it certainly is an idea, isn't it, to move to a uniform across the district? I'm sure there are a lot of high school kids that would not love to hear that, my own children included. But, just from a common sense point of view, if we're having an issue with dress code in general, and it's causing a distraction to the learning environment, you know, certainly uniforms are an option and something that would be a solution to some of the issues. So, thank you for bringing that up. It's an interesting thing to talk about.
Oh, Sean?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, this came up at a lunch I had with school board member in Brevard this week. They have a program there called Tie Something. And, I can't remember, and Dr. Rendell's nodding, I think he knows about this program, but they essentially... It's just one class period. They gather all the high school males of a certain age or whatever, and they have leaders from the community, kind of like our tunnels of hope, you know? So, you know, your chiefs of police would come in, and they teach them... They teach them how to tie a tie, how to shake a hand, and how... And, give them some feedback on positive self-regard and behaving as a gentleman and virtue. And, not to make this single gender issue, but this program is called the Tie Program. And, I asked him for a little bit more information on it, because I think it's something that maybe we could include as part of our positive behavioral support or things like that. And, of course, you know, social media is full of these types of stories where they do that, and then they have 100% graduation rate and things like that. So, it's good that we're discussing this. I think maybe that's something we can do a little research on and implement in our schools.
Ms. Shaw?
What?
Were you finished?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
All my children, they have, you know, they wear solid polos, khakis, navy. Now, they're in middle school, so they can actually wear black. I love it. It's so... As a parent, it's so easy, and, you know, some of the arguments is, "Well, we can't afford uniforms." I'm telling you, I've bought many polos from Walmart for $3.97 that have lasted the entire year. And, you know, having a second grader, there's always something on his shirt, so not having the logos was nice, just having a solid polo. So, I personally, as a parent, like the uniforms, because it's just a neater appearance. And, but, I believe there was some state funding a couple of years ago, that we actually, as a district, would get paid per student if we had a unified dress code.
$10 per student, and it was removed from this year's budget.
Oh, it was.
Yes. Very... Not very many districts took advantage of it, and they felt those resources were better allocated elsewhere.
Too bad.
This was a good discussion. Yes, ma'am. Come here.
Well, this was, and yes, prior to the new board members getting on, this was brought up, and the both principals... Let me give you an example, and I hate to name names, but let's say Hollister, I think it's like a seagull or something. So, if you tried to get a solid polo, and we're just going with polos, never mind former Marine. No, there's no former Marine, right? But, anyway...
We know about uniforms.
Where would the girls' shirts, shorts or dresses be? Where the tips are? It becomes very problematic for the principals to enforce. That was the word from... Because of the solid shirt, then you're going to have the emblem, and then somebody says, "Well, what are you talking about? It's like a $50 polo, but the little emblem, and why is his little emblem okay, but my big emblem of some other thing?" And, it is very problematic at the high school level. But, I agree that the... In fact, the elementary schools and middle schools, I think, are perfect for it. She said they take votes, but I just can tell you that the principals for the high schools say that it's very hard... Although Fort Pierce has it, I would like to know how many people are trashed down to the, you know, what the confrontation and rub is, you know, and because it's very hard to enforce. And, then, it's going to start being, is it because of who Johnny is? He has the emblem, and he's called down? But, that other, you know, Jim, he doesn't get called down, but Johnny gets called down, and maybe it's because of who Johnny is, or, you know, it just starts that with the little... Because they don't make solid polos for kids above 12 anymore.
$3.97 at Walmart.
J.C. Penney's, and plus Hollister, they're $15.
They have the emblem on it. And, what I'm saying is, then you start having all those emblem issues. And, both principals, as you were talking about, the principals did, you know, I spoke to both of them last year, but you can always rerun that up the flagpole every year.
Ms. Justice?
Yeah. I was just going to say, emblems are allowed on the uniform polos, and they have to be less than two inches in size. So, you're able to get, just so the parents are clear, it's... We don't require... Unless you have a school emblem for your specific school that you're required to wear, in general, it's... Any emblem is allowed if it's less than two inches. Also, at the high schools, there should be... There are certain dress code guidelines, as far as short length or skirt length or midriff showing or some of those things. So, we do have guidelines. I think it's whether or not... I think it's not going to be a popular decision, and I think that that's probably, you know, why there's some reticence about going forward or anyone moving forward. But, again, as we continue to rework the code of conduct, we're going to be doing that in the coming year. You know, we have heard some concerns about dress code, and so I think that it's something that this board would be smart to revisit.
Yeah, but that's... So, let me clarify. There's a difference between dress code and uniform. So, I can tell you that the uniforms will not be acceptable. But, dress code is, and we, as you said, we do have dress code, but uniforms are going to be very hard to...
Everything that we do up here seems to be hard to...
That's right.
No, I'm just saying, in the real world, let's...
Every day.
Well, I mean, we're setting an expectation. A solid polo is not an extreme expectation. Now, the button-down might get a little cost.
I don't know. It's going to be interesting to see how it works at Fort Pierce Central.
Right. But, if we stair-stepped it into, you know, if we go across the district and our middle school is now in a dress code, then they're going to be used to it, and maybe like at the freshman learning center, that would be easier to impose there and just stair-step it and not just be all at once.
If it helps with our graduation rate and our discipline issues, it's worth it. We'll take all the criticism in the world, I think, if it works. But, we'll let the superintendent take all the initial criticism. Okay. All right. Let's see. I forgot where we were on discussion. Thank you, Superintendent. But, any other discussion items? Then, we'll go to member matters. Laura, do you have anything else?
Not for discussion.
Anybody else? Okay. Okay. Then, school board member matters. Ms. Justice?
Yes, sir. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about iReady and about computer usage. You know, one of the things that I had spoken with Mr. Green about, and one of the things I had heard from teachers and parents, was logging onto the computer for our youngest learners was difficult. So I wanted to talk a little bit about iReady and about computer usage. You know, one of the things that I had spoken with Mr. Green about, and one of the things I had heard from teachers and parents, was logging on to the computer for our youngest learners was difficult. And so I had said to Dr. Rendell, is there any way we can make that easier? I volunteered in some kindergarten classrooms this year, and the computer lab is, can be a challenging place for our youngest learners. So I just want to say thank you, because I think that there, we're making some strides to make login easier. It used to be your six-digit student ID with an uppercase letter and a lowercase letter, and when you're new to a classroom and a keyboard, that's really hard. So anyway, so I want to say thank you about that. And our Title I, they came up with this great brochure. So Karen Mallett's and her team talking about iReady, what is iReady, and overview for families, and that's going to be available. You can ask your principal for it. I know it'll be available at Title I schools, and I'm sure if we can, if we have, if parents have an interest, please ask your principal, make sure we can get this in our front office, so you can learn a little bit more about iReady and how we're utilizing it as a tool in our classrooms to help learning. So I had a really fun weekend and got to really, I get really excited this time of year. My kids are excited. I have a kindergartner that, a little boy who's starting kindergarten this year, so his backpack is packed right by the front of the house with the lunchbox. Everything's ready. But I got to go out Friday night and see some of the other students around the district that are getting ready for school. And Sebastian River High School held a sneak peek for their parents and students. So I went to Encore, I got to see Encore perform, and it was amazing in a week. The, they had choreography, and Mr. Stanley's wife actually volunteers and works with the kids and does the choreography, and she takes a week off from work to do that, so that's really wonderful. And it was just great. They're having a very jazzy, it's jazz, that's their, kind of their thing this, this year. So I'm excited to see how that performance continues to get better, but in a week, it was phenomenal. And then I got to go out to the football field and see the band, and it was awesome. I am so impressed by that band and how hard those kids work. There are two different bands this year. There's a performance band, and then there's the school-based band that'll play during the games, but I think the performance band, they're calling it the Pride Band. I think they'll be there, too. And those kids have been conditioning to be in this marching band, how fast they move on the field is phenomenal. I was so impressed by their dedication. As we all know, it's been really hot, and they actually lost like 10 hours of practice time this week, and they still were phenomenal. So they're, I think it's King of, the King of Pop, Michael Jackson, the King of Rock, Elvis Presley, they're playing some of those songs. So definitely come out and see the band in the football games or any of the performances they do. It just will bring a smile to your face, and just really proud of how hard these kids work. Saturday, I got to kick off Saturday morning with the Education Foundation Breakfast. Cynthia Falardo and the Education Foundation hosted many of our teachers and principals at Riverside Theater for a breakfast, and that was really wonderful. The teachers got to learn a little bit more about that community partnership we have with Riverside Theater. There are so many resources that you can use in your classroom that Riverside is willing to provide to come in and perform plays or work with your students to perform. So we're very thankful for that. Headed over to GYAC for the backpack giveaway, and want to give a huge shout-out to the Sunrise Rotary Club that volunteered and put together backpacks and helped there. That was wonderful. We had, Jason Brown was out from the county, Dr. Rendell was there, Mr. Teskey came out and supported some retired teachers, the sheriff's office was out, so just really great, and the kids were excited to get ready for school. And then back to Riverside where Mr. Green and Mrs. Basar and myself, we were, we played a game called Are You Smarter Than a School Kid? And I just want to say, we have some pretty smart school kids in Indian River County, right? So we had a lot of fun doing that, and they had a great turnout. So I want to thank also Brooke Flood, she was out there, the pre-K information for parents, VPK, and Lillian, and our ESE team was out, and so I think it was just really a great weekend of interacting with the community, and very excited for the start of school. That is it, sir.
Okay.
Yes, I just, you stole my thunder about the, no, about the bands, but yes, the bands are doing a wonderful job, and there are, there are two different bands this year, which makes it harder on the children who are in both. They just won't have any time after school on Friday, because then they have to go to their, the band for their second practice and on. But I wanted to thank the marching band parents, because they are such, so involved with the fundraising and also supporting and driving their children, and also the children for putting that time in this summer. I also want to remind everybody that school will be back in session. Please be observant and driving and mindful. Additionally, next week, there is, excuse me, this week and tomorrow and throughout this week, are orientations for the students. So please, parents, I do know that you do respond, those that do, and if you are not aware, parents, please, it is on the website. If you go under Schools and you look for your, you can see the schedule, so I want to make sure that parents are included in the orientations, and don't skip that. That's really about it that I could think of right now, so.
Okay, Sean? Are you up? Sure?
Well, it's starting to come back in a routine. Summer kind of got us all off, or got me off schedule, that's for sure. But Thursday, I want to say, the new teacher orientation was just fantastic. When I, I had no idea, and I walked into that room, and the cafeteria was just full of new teachers. So I really appreciate the support and everything that staff was out there, all the principals, assistant principals, just welcoming our new teachers to the district. Mr. Foss was there also. And, and we had talked about that as a board, a newer board, that we are here to support them in any way. So I do really appreciate that, that teacher orientation that you had that day. As Mrs. Simcheck had mentioned, we do have on our website, thank you to our new PIO, Kristin, for putting together the orientation and open house list. It's a very comprehensive list. It's going to the home screen of indianriverschools.org, is it org? I always forget. And on the homepage, just click on orientations and open houses. Orientations are going on this week, and then open houses are going on after we come back to school. If you're not able, as parents, if you're not able to get out to orientation, please, as, I, I won't be here for our, my children's orientation, but I will be going on Focus and grabbing their schedule off Focus. So if you miss orientation, I would suggest if they're in middle school, high school, go on Focus and get, get your schedule there. And I want to give a shout-out to Storm Grove Middle School. They had an awesome camp sting rate on August 1st. It was a, it was a half-day. They brought in all the sixth graders, because we know that the incoming fifth graders are really, or the incoming sixth graders are really nervous, so, but what they do is they have half-day, they have some students from seventh and eighth that just show them around, and they get to meet the, some of the teachers and just get a feel of the campus. And I know that it really is a lot of work to put this together, but I'm sure the students really do appreciate this. So it's a very busy week. Our principals are doing a great job, and our assistant principals and all our staff, and we really do appreciate everything that you're doing, because it is an extremely busy time of year for you guys. Did I say it wrong?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, Mrs. Poiselle, the executive assistant, spent a lot of time putting the orientation list together. I just sent the email. So all the credit goes to her.
Okay.
Thank you.
To both of you, thank you. All right. That's it.
I had a kind of a neat experience this, during the, I guess, the last year or so, this district has spent millions of dollars on the air-conditioned chiller plant over Virbitch High School, between Virbitch High School and Virbitch Elementary. And I had the privilege of going in there and touring that thing this past Friday, and that's an impressive deal. And I'm going to say this, because I think he's already left, but if you want to get a tour, just call Nick Westenberger, and whatever his number is, and he will give you a tour. But I'm telling you, that's, that's the most amazing thing I think I've seen around here lately. You can eat off the floor. It is, it is perfect. It is perfect. And it's supposed to be saving us a lot of money. I don't know, Carter may be able to give us some more information, but, I mean, we've spent, I don't know, 12, 15 million dollars on the project, and you folks need to go check it out. It's really, really impressive, and I hope it's saving the money that we're, we're hoping that it does. Yes, sir?
That's part of that performance contracting that's guaranteed to save us money, right?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
It's guaranteed.
Well, that's a headline.
All right. Anything else that anybody wants to bring to the table? Last chance. Okay, Dr. Rendell, closing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the last board meeting we have before the beginning of school, so I just want to remind everybody that school starts Monday, August 14th. Mr. Teskey and I will be out at the bus compounds early that morning, if any of the board members want to join us for that. We want to wish the drivers well on that first day of school, but in all seriousness, this is the beginning of what we look forward to every year. We are in this business for the students. They return August 14th. The teachers have already been back this week getting ready, but this will kick off what I believe will be another great year, and we'll be able to talk after the second week of school, actually after the eclipse.